Call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of June 3rd. We'll note that all commissioners are present. First item then is the Order of Business. Are there any changes to the Order of Business? Hearing none, would there be a motion to approve the Order of Business?
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. The next item is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Now, would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move to the non timetable agenda. And the first item there is the Public Safety Center. And Mr. Kessel, are you presenting now?
Commissioner Johnson, yes, I am. The Public Safety Center, we had put out for an RFQ or a request for qualifications in regard to the design team for that structure. We had 15 different submittals for that building. And so we established a team to review all those submittals and bring a recommendation before the City Commission this evening. We did a review of all those submittals, brought it down to four. We then did reference checks on all of the top four. We invited the top two to come in and do interviews. And based on that process, we would recommend tonight that we engage Schutz Foss to design the Public Safety Center. We will be entering contract negotiations with Schutz Foss, assuming that the City Commission approves of them, approves of us to do that. And hopefully then move forward with the design of that safety, Public Safety Center.
Can you tell us a little more about them? I mean, are they a North Dakota firm?
Sure. Schutz Foss themselves is new to North Dakota. They do have a local office here in Dickinson. They've done a lot of work in Wyoming area. They came here approximately 18 months ago. Of course, like many following the development that's happened in western North Dakota. They have partnered with Shepherd Roth. They are a firm that specializes in police and fire department programming. I personally called a sergeant with the LAPD who dealt with a $600 million bond issue that the City of Los Angeles made for upgrading and providing new public safety centers and upgrades to existing buildings. Shepherd Roth came highly recommended. In fact, he shared with me some of the other firms that they selected over, or to get to Shepherd Roth. And some of those firms were ones that actually applied with us as well. So the firms have both come highly recommended. We felt as though the top two, we really couldn't go wrong. They do have a local presence. And for those reasons, we're recommending Schutz Foss to the City Commission this evening.
Who was on the review team?
The review team included Police Chief Dossinger, Fire Chief Seavock, myself. We had Commissioner Stuckert. And we had Emergency Manager Falsing on that team.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Stuckert, anything you'd want to say since you were on the team?
We were very thorough. Each one of us on the team picked out references and called and got good references from all of them. And we don't know what the bid will be, but that's our next step.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Is there a motion regarding this item?
I'll make a motion to approve Schutz Foss for the Public Safety Center.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Stuckert.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Bring us to item B. This is regarding a proposed impact fee ordinance. And I believe Mr. Coleen will present this.
Yes, Mr. President, Commissioners. The ordinance before you is an ordinance for a water and sewer availability charge to be imposed upon properties that may newly connect to the city's waterwork system, both the water system and the wastewater system. As we reported on this to you last time, at the last commission meeting, what the city is looking at is the construction now of these sort of off-site water utility improvements, water tanks and major trunk lines that are required in order to expand out the city's infrastructure system. And this proposed ordinance establishes a charge that would be levied against all properties connecting to the system, new properties connecting to the system, in order to pay for those sort of off-site major system improvements. The way that this charge would work is that we would estimate the amount of infrastructure that we, as a city, would need to construct within the next five years or so. And then, along with our comprehensive plan, estimate the number of connections that would need to be made for that system, the number of housing units, apartment units, hotel rooms, and that sort of thing. And then simply divide the amount of costs that we anticipate incurring with the amount of connections that we anticipate making to the system. And that number would be the water availability and sewer availability charge that would be assessed at the time a building permit is taken out. We anticipate that this would help to fund some of the infrastructure that the city will need to put in within the next few years in order to extend infrastructure out to some of those areas that are newly developing. This fee would be included in the city's fee schedule, the standard fee schedule that you initiate from year to year and adopt from year to year. So developers would know of that potential charge as they are developing those properties and bringing those online. I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Coleen. Are there any comments or questions for the city attorney? I have a question regarding the, Mr. Jackson, did you have a question? Go ahead.
I have a couple of questions.
Well, why don't you go ahead first?
I guess the first one maybe is curiosity. As much as anything, it seems that we've been, over the last year or so here, moving towards what I would call lump sum impact fee, negotiating that with developers. And I assume that this would replace that concept. True?
Commissioner Jackson, it would in most instances. This ordinance does allow still for planned unit developments to come in and pay sort of a negotiated fee. We have done that in the past with certain developments and would be able to do that in the future if that becomes necessary. But for the standard development that comes in without a PUD designation, this would be the lump sum impact fee that we would assess.
One of the pluses that I thought that system, and I realize we didn't have that really detailed, really thought out yet or anything, but is that the payment the city would receive would be much more upfront than this would be. This payment wouldn't be, this payment wouldn't happen until time of building permit application, correct?
That's correct.
Where the impact fee probably would have happened around the time of plating or not too long after plating.
It depends on, Commissioner Jackson, it depends on the way in which the PUD agreement was designated out or was negotiated. In the case of one PUD agreement that we have, it was the developer who was taking all the upfront cost of installing water and sewer infrastructure to get to their development. And then if there was any oversized capacity that the developer put in, the developer would recoup that cost as properties connected to that infrastructure that the developer put in. So there would be less upfront money in that situation where a developer is constructing its own infrastructure for its own development and getting repaid later.
I guess the biggest thing that's catching my attention here is the timing. The time of building permit, it may not be the developer at all that's making the payment. And in the end, with the impact fees, it's, developer's going to pass that cost on too. So there's probably no difference. But we could have subdivisions that we don't see building permits on some lots for several years, where with the impact fee concept that we had been discussing, that likely would have been sooner for much of that payment. So that's the thing that's got me. What made us go to this concept? The definability issue, I suspect?
Commissioner Jackson, I think that's part of it, the definability, to get a standard fee in there that we can apply sort of citywide rather than by specific developments or specific units. And also, I think the anticipation that the city is going to be constructing some of these facilities just by the nature of our infrastructure program that is called for in our comprehensive plan, that that infrastructure is already being designed and is most likely going to be built by the city. And I think there is a feeling among city staff that if the city is going to be putting money into those projects, that we would like those to be designed by city staff and the construction process run through the city rather than having developers sort of construct their own infrastructure without possibly enough city supervision or oversight of the process.
I certainly agree with that. Absolutely. I suspect a purchaser of a bond probably gets confidence with this system, I would suspect.
We have not talked this system over with bond counsel to see whether or not this would even be bondable against. My suspicion is that since we don't have a history of what these fees would generate, that it may not be possible to bond specifically against this revenue stream until we get some history there and until we know exactly how soon properties are going to come online. It's possible we may be wrong about that, but that would be something we'd have to talk over with the underwriters.
That would be pretty important, I would think. That aspect. Well, those are my thoughts. Those are my concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. My question is on the determination of fee. Is there any requirement that we have that written into the ordinance, the process of how we're going to determine fees?
There's not a specific requirement that you detail out that process in this ordinance. I think it's in there to give sort of a rational basis for why that fee would be imposed as opposed to just sort of plucking a number out of the air. And that's the reason that we chose to put that in this ordinance rather than to leave it open, I guess.
The thought I have is, you know, it's probably a good process, but why not keep it out of the ordinance and have it just as a city policy? If it's a city policy, it's, you have a little more flexibility in changing it. I think it's our experience, if we try to put things in a formula and kind of put it in law, there's always something that pops up that doesn't quite fit the formula, whether it's a specific development, say, or maybe it's a sign of the times. If, like Mr. Jackson said, you may have a development that is really slow to fill in, you might wish you were a little more negotiable on your fees at certain times to have that fill in. It may be very desirable. So I'm just wondering if that should be outside the ordinance. As you said, it's going to be part of the annual fee schedule. And it's, to me, it's okay to have a method to generate those fees. But if it's in ordinance and you find something that doesn't fit, then we have to go through two readings, try to amend the ordinance, and it gets very cumbersome. So I think I would give that some thought on perhaps taking it out. Any reaction to those comments?
Mayor Johnson, I was just asking Attorney Coleen if that would affect the question that Commissioner Jackson asked about regarding bond issuance? If having it in policy would affect how we would bond or if we can bond as opposed to having it in ordinance? And it may not. I don't know the answer to the question.
I suspect the bonding company might, if they're interested in the impact fees, might say that they'd want the impact fees dedicated to the, you know, to the bond repayment. They probably aren't so interested in how you get to them. They would just want, when you collect the impact fees, that they're dedicated to the You know, it's like with, say, our sales tax revenue, they probably aren't so interested in how we collect them, just if we can dedicate them or not. And I know you're going to talk about that later, too, but...
Mr. President, one of the things that I liked about the lump sum impact fee concept is that, to me, it made a developer be more serious. You know, we've got subdivisions that have been platted and rezoned, and they've been sitting for two, three, four years. And the idea that a developer would have to put money upfront early in the process would tell us that he's more serious about moving forward with the development. That was one of the things that I liked about that. Now, what I didn't like about it was the intangibility, if you will, of trying to do negotiations. But I suppose we could have come up with some formula like this as well. Do we have other locations that, do you know other cities that have used, that are using this system?
There are other cities in North Dakota that use this or a similar system of a building permit fee that's attached for whack and sack charges. I believe Minot does, West Fargo, Bismarck does, a lot of the major cities in North Dakota that have seen significant development have attached a similar fee to their system.
So they're fronting all the cost of the infrastructure and recouping it through
I kind of have the same concern as Mr. Jackson and the mayor, is that I'd like to see the contractors have some skin in the game, so to speak, when we start talking expenses of this sort. I'm kind of, I don't know if we need to approve this tonight, first reading, is it? Well, it's, you know, we can approve first, we can act on first reading, or we can decide not to act on first reading if we want to see, you know, a different draft. It's an important ordinance to us, and we've not had it for quite a while. We can probably not have it for two more weeks, too. Did you, Mr. Coleen, did you, you mentioned some of these other cities. Did you actually, did you read some of their ordinances, how they handled this?
I did. And I went back through a couple of those cities. I did not have a chance to talk with their personnel on how they implement those ordinances, but I did read through the ordinances that they've adopted.
So did, the ones you read, did they tend to write into the ordinance how they determine the fee also?
They did. And that was one of the reasons that the process is included here as well. But I can have that conversation with their personnel and see what their experience with that has been.
Other comments?
I think that when we look at this, we've got to remember that these other communities, well, certainly not Minot, but, you know, they're in more of a traditional growth situation than we are. You know, we still talk about the volatility, the risk, the other words like that, that I think you have to apply to our situation. And I worry about this, putting us in a situation where we're building, say, a water reservoir that is intended to serve, what at the time is a hayfield. And we're going to rely on those future building permit applications to pay for that water reservoir. We get some upfront. It's a little different situation.
I think, you know, another variation of that concern is if you do it with the building, the fee with the building permit, and let's say we go through a downturn. So now you've got these, they may be platted, but they're not developed. But according to our formula and our ordinance, that if we're in a slow period, but somebody does come along and says, "I'm willing to build something here," then we have a pretty huge fee attached to that. And it might be in our best interest to accept less in order to have the construction. You know, as long as you're in a pretty robust economy, I think the way you have it would work. But if something changes and our economy isn't as strong, and we would be happy just to have, you know, almost anything built, now you have, by formula, you're going to have a pretty big fee against there.
You know, I like the methodology. I, you know, it's, you can have some difficulty, I think, coming up with some of these costs sometimes, but I like the concept. It's the timing of the payment that's just not, not sitting too well with me.
Commissioner Jackson, if it was at the time of final plat issuance?
Well, that's what I'm wondering. If, you know, can we do almost the same ordinance and even take a portion at time of plating?
Mm-hmm.
And maybe a portion at building permit application? Or can we take a portion, you know, within X amount of time of plating?
Because you really have three different integral pieces of the puzzle, and that would be plating, building issuance, and CO issuance. And we could, as you're suggesting, I suppose a potential exists that you could mix the time and, or the payments at each of those levels.
And maybe you could. You know, I'm repeating myself, but to say it a different way, we've talked a lot about not wanting to do special assessments on raw ground. It seems like that's what this is, just a different form. And again, now, if you're in a different kind of a community, that you're looking at a steady growth curve over the next 10 years, whatever, and maybe we'll have that. But I think, I think we all feel like we still have the potential for our growth to be a higher risk kind of growth.
Well, this is all great feedback, and the type of thing that we need to craft the ordinance that you would accept. And if, my suggestion would be, we could go back, review this, incorporate some of those suggestions, not take first reading tonight, and bring something back to you that is more tolerable, if that's the right word.
Well, if, for determination of fee, if it was determined by resolution, you know, and you just said that in the ordinance, that it was determined by resolution, you could probably write a resolution that gave not only the commission but management here a little more latitude in dealing with situations. And resolutions can be changed just at a meeting. I mean, we don't have to go through the formal process. So, I mean, if you had a situation come up that, you know, just didn't seem to fit at all, seemed to be pretty unique, you could come to the commission with a new draft of the resolution that you could address the situation. I mean, we can't craft it here, and I think Mr. Coleen and others could maybe come up with better solutions than we're trying to come up with here. But what I'm afraid is if we put the formula into ordinance, you kind of box yourself in the corner. The formula may be the best way to go, but why not do it as part of, part of an ongoing resolution or part of a policy, however best fits? I know you have to guard against being arbitrary, so it doesn't appear like one developer gets a better deal over another developer. But I think we all know that no two developments are identical. And even some developments start out maybe zoned one way, planned, and then many times if they're, especially if they're a larger development, we see subtle changes to them, but changes nonetheless.
All excellent points.
We'd be happy to take your comments and redraft this and bring something back to you for your consideration.
Okay. Should we do that? You know, you just, you got a couple of weeks to kind of think it through again. And maybe you'll talk to some of those other cities, and they may have, you know, already experienced some things we haven't thought about here at this table, and you can share that with us. Okay. We'll move to reports, and let's see if we can maybe do this first one before we go to our timetable. But you've got the Fisher Eastside Streets.
Thank you, President Johnson. Just a quick report. This has been a topic that's appeared a couple of different times before you. I was in communication with KLJ staff, Mr. Kubis, again today. He has outlined a process where those streets will all get paved, they'll get a hard surface, and will be within the $600,000 special assessment, impact fee ordinance that was approved. So that's exciting. That's exactly the type of thing that we wanted to happen. And it looks like we'll do that kind of as a hybrid. There are landowners who are willing to pay upfront for the impact, or for the costs associated with the infrastructure improvements. And then we will end up special assessing the $600,000 that I mentioned earlier. So bottom line is the streets will get hard surfaced and will stay within our existing policy.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on the Fisher issue? Okay. Well, it's 5:00 on my wrist watch, so we'll go to the timetable agenda. And the first item there is a public hearing for a rezoning petition. And Mr. Cretan, I suspect you're introducing this item?
That is correct, Mr. President. Commissioners, the first item we have under the timetable is a rezoning petition from general commercial to single-family residential for a property situated north and east of First Street East and 10th Avenue East. The planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval.
Okay. And this is an ordinance, the number, Mr. Coleen?
Mr. President, this will be ordinance 1512-1512.
1512, okay. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on ordinance 1512, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Is there anybody that wishes to comment? There's no one from the public that would comment. So any comments by city staff or city commissioners?
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve the rezoning request.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson, Mr. Altman, Mr. Steiner, Mrs. Duquardt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We're getting a little ahead of ourselves, so we'll jump back to reports. The MDU item, is that yours, Mr. Kessel?
It is, President Johnson. We are actively negotiating with MDU with regard to the infrastructure extensions to serve the new diesel topping facility that'll be located west of town. Specifically, we are talking about reuse water and sewer infrastructure. We're, because of those lines, as they will exist, we are anticipating that we'll get several requests from existing and future property owners to connect to these lines and provide service to them. Currently, the majority of those requests will probably come from people who are located outside of our existing city limits. And our policy today is not to provide utilities to customers outside of our city limits. It, it happens on a rare occasion, I will admit that, but it's, as a matter of policy, we, we try not to do that. This is going to be a rather unique situation, and what we'd like to do is, is bring forth a policy to you on how to deal with this. But before we craft that policy, we'd like some input on your thoughts with regard to providing city utility services to customers outside of our city limits. Do we want to do that? Do we not want to do that? And if we do, are there any parameters that we should include in the policy that would be to your liking?
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any feedback for him on this item?
When you're talking city limits, are you talking the ETZ also?
No, actually, Commissioner Steiner, I'm, I'm talking our city limits specifically. There's a rare instance where we do provide services outside of those city limits, but it's not often. And most of these, the diesel topping facility will currently be reside about three miles outside of our existing city limits, so they would actually be outside of our, our ETZ as well. And our hope is to also connect the City of Southheart to this line that will also service the diesel topping facility. So, they're well beyond our extraterritorial zoning authority. And I think we can craft a, a ordinance to exclude Southheart and probably even the diesel topping facility. What I'm concerned about is, this line is likely to follow that Highway 10 corridor, and therefore, we could get requests from anybody located in the West Industrial Park. We could get others who are in the residential areas along Highway 10 as well, Maryville, that could ask for sewer services specifically, where currently, our policy would prevent them from accessing it. But this is a big deal because of, we're sizing that pipe today, and we need to have a pretty good idea of how many connections will exist. So, this, this input is desired rather quickly.
I think this is really a tough one. This is a tough one. Because all things being equal, no, I don't think we should without annexation. But we're going to be put in a position that if we ask to oversize a line, anticipating future annexation, we've got to pay for it somehow.
That is the conundrum we are in.
I have a question regarding water. Like, we buy so much water now. What we, I know this diesel plant is going to use a lot of water. Would we be able to up our water consumption then with?
Commissioner Duquardt, the, the water itself, the potable water, will be supplied by Southwest Water, at least initially. If they would ever reside within our city limits, there would be a, more than likely, a change, where we would be the provider of, of that potable water. But initially, anyway, specific to the diesel topping facility, their potable water will be provided by Southwest Water. We're providing them reuse water for a couple of reasons. The main reason is because Southwest Water does not guarantee fire suppression with their service. And they don't, that's a, a common policy they have throughout their system. The reuse water, although not potable, is completely usable for charging fire suppression systems. So, we'll, we'll serve them in two ways.
I think their process also requires water in the refining process, and, and Southwest Water perhaps wouldn't have the capacity to provide them with that much water. And they don't need potable water for the refining process. It is a, a tough issue. You know, I'm aware of at least one exception that we have, and it's, I think we made the exception really for an economic development reason. The refinery is certainly an economic development reason. There's quite a difference in those opportunities versus, say, hooking up a one residential home. So, perhaps when you think about crafting a policy, perhaps the exceptions here are significant economic development opportunities. You know, I, I don't know what else could happen out there, but I'm fairly confident that I think something else will happen that's, would, can be significant economic development. And it would probably be in the best interests of the city and the greater southwest here that we step forward and, and provide services for those types of projects, even if they're outside our city limits or even our ETZ. So, I, I think we have to be prepared to accommodate that, but in terms of accommodating individual residences, that would be more challenging.
And President Johnson, I'll defer to Engineer Watson, but I believe this line will be a pressurized line, which will prevent a lot of connections. They want to limit those connections due to that pressure. So, if, if like a Maryville, for instance, would like to connect, I don't believe we would entertain individual connections. What we would entertain more likely is a, a collector line within the development and one connection to the sewer line itself. Is that accurate?
Mr. President, Commissioner, that is accurate. It will be pressurized.
So, that, that pressurization does limit the amount of access points, just by virtue of its design?
Who is going to own this line from 116th East?
Right now, it's slated that City of Dickinson will own that line. And that we did that mostly to control access.
Well, I think that makes sense.
The sewer, or the reuse water line is currently slated to be owned by the diesel topping facility itself, at least from the water reclamation facility to their plant.
So, there is a possibility that if capacity is in this sewer line, because we own it and control it, and the, and an adjacent subdivision does want to come in five years from now, we can do that. It's just the capacity issue. Do we have numbers?
Terms of?
Well, I suspect some engineering assumptions could be made, and, and a number could be established as to what the cost of the oversizing would be to accommodate some adjacent contribution.
We did have some preliminary numbers. I'm going to have to bring those back for you, Commissioner Jackson. It's not an expend, or it's not an inexpensive endeavor. We're, right now, I think the, the discussion is at least a six inch oversize, but, and I, I hate to-
But we've talked before about how the bulk of the cost is in getting the line in the ground in the first place.
Yep.
The oversizing really, percentage-wise, dollar-wise, I don't know, but percentage-wise, should be a small percentage.
I don't want to complicate matters a whole lot, but I, I should also include, as I understand it today, depending upon the amount of development that would happen west, north of the interstate but continuing west, there's a breakpoint that would require the sewer to, to go west itself, follow the corridor, add exit 56, go south, and then come back through the pipe that we're discussing right now. So, not only would it serve areas along the Highway 10 corridor, but it could also serve the potential for developments north of the interstate. So, depending upon your appetite for westward expansion, this is the line that would facilitate that growth as well.
I think we really need to consider an oversized line. I mean, just for the future, it may not be this year, next year, five years down the road, but eventually at some time, I think we know that we'll, might be some annexations going out there, and the grounds open up, and now's the time to put that expense in.
Well, we'll let you ponder this for a bit, and we'll come back to it. We have a 505 timetable agenda item, we're a little late on, so I'd like to move back and get to that, that's regarding a special use permit. And so, Mr. Kurtan, could you introduce this item?
Mr. President, this is a special use permit by New Vision LLC to construct apartments on Lot 1, Block 4 of Cook Meadow Hills Fourth Edition, which is located to the east of State Avenue. The developer is proposing on building a unified apartment complex on the entire block. The LC portion, or the limited commercial portion, is roughly a third of that block, and residential is prohibited. In order for them to build the apartments on it, they would have to get a special use permit and then develop it as a unified apartment complex. City staff and the planning commission are recommending approval contingent upon the six attached conditions that, that are attached with your adopting resolution. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Kurtan. And what is the resolution number, Mr. Coling?
Mr. President, this will be Resolution 22-2013.
Okay, so, this is Resolution 22. If, if anyone from the public wishes to speak to this resolution, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public that wishes to speak. Any comments, questions here by city commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22-2013.
We have the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Further discussion. Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Duquardt?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, we'll go back to that MDU issue, and I believe you were, originally you asked our input on a policy on, on how you would handle that line once it's in the ground. So, you've got a little bit of input on that. What else are you?
That, that's really what we need, because the, the, the policy will then help us formulate the amount of connections that we, we can anticipate, and there, then therefore, the line size. And that's really where we need to get to within a very short window of time, is the line size. So, what we can do then is bring forth a, a ordinance for you to review a policy, and maybe that'll help facilitate questions as well, and incorporate what you've shared this evening.
Okay. Well, what, what Mr. Jackson said was that, you know, he thinks property should be annexed before they can connect. I said, I think if it's a major or significant economic development issue or opportunity, we have to be prepared to provide services. Mr. Steiner said, make sure the pipe's big enough to, to accommodate everything in the future. And I'm, they, did we have any other comments, or is there additional comments I'd like to be made?
Well, I think you have discussed the, the cost of the input, but you also need to look at the revenue that it'll generate over its lifetime, too. And that, you know, sure, there's going to be a large upfront cost, but you only get one chance to put it in. So, like Commissioner Steiner said, I think that we should trend towards going a little bit bigger, because, you know, there is a revenue generating stream that this is going to fund as well, right?
Oh, most definitely. If we're providing services, we will also collect the appropriate fees.
Right.
Mm-hmm. And I'm not an engineer, obviously, but, but getting the size is more important, as I understand it, with lines like this, as opposed to water lines, because the tendency that you could go septic inside the pipe itself, which causes additional concerns. So, you don't want to go too large, that it affects chemical reactions inside the pipe, but maybe Engineer Watson can address those issues better than me.
Mr. President, Commissioner, certainly what you said, Sean, is correct for a gravity sewer. Since this will be a force main, the pipe sizing is not as important as it would be for a gravity sewer. In speaking with Mr. Berg from Apex, it's my understanding that the current design for this force main feeding out to the west side to what is 116th, is currently sized to handle another Dickinson on that side of the area. So, the current sizing of the pipe is really, has been done in a conservative fashion, so that it will handle quite an amount of growth in the area. And if that does not happen, then it'll be adequate to serve our existing facilities. So, if I'm not mistaken, I don't think there is an issue about oversizing, because I think the current size of the, of the force main will accommodate any future growth to the west. Now, that being said, it's a different story when we're talking about water. If we're going to push a water line out there, then we have to be care, more careful about the size of that facility.
So, it sounds like we really don't have an issue in terms of the pipe size itself. It's a policy of access to it that, that you really need to work on then. When, we had a, a meeting not too many days ago, where Mr. Jackson and I attended, and we, we talked about the, how, the process of how you were going to prioritize projects, and we're going to talk about that a little later. But I remember in that meeting, and Mr. Watson, correct if I'm not, correct me if I'm not remembering correctly, but Engineer Berg, when talking about a septage receiving station, if I understood him properly, we're better off to locate that further away from the mechanical treatment plant than closer to it. So, for example, if there were to be one out at Exit 56, that would be a desire, more desirable location than having the septage station, say, adjacent to our mechanical treatment plant.
That's correct.
So, you know, we've got the pipe, it sounds to me like the right size. If, if there is a development out at Exit 56, having a septage receiving station would be a very desirable thing, in my view, for the southwest. It would give people a legal and convenient means of dealing with the human waste there. And I think that would be good for all of us here in the immediate southwest, so, I mean, so when we have a, you know, it could be quite some time before an Exit 56 would come into the city, if it ever would. But at the same time, it would make sense, in my view at least, that we receive the septage there and we process it. And so, our, our policy, our ordinance would have to address a situation like that. And I think that kind of comes under that heading of significant economic development projects myself.
I assume also then that we would like an exception for other municipalities serving Southheart. Southard.
I think my own view is if we have the capacity to do it in the wherewithal, I think anytime we can reduce or eliminate the, what are the ponds called again?
Lagoons.
Lagoons, yes. See, I'm already eliminating ours. But if we can eliminate lagoons, I think that's a good thing for our area, whether they're owned by Southard or Dickinson or some other community.
Well, we'll bring back an ordinance crafted around the input this evening for your review, and thank you very much for your input, unless there's additional.
As always, we, you know, retain the right to criticize whatever you bring to us.
That's expected as well.
Any other comments on, from those items?
Well, I just wondered with MDU hiring 100 employees or maybe more, I think it would take a very large septic system to provide service if we didn't have that. So, move forward.
You know, I think I'm hearing a little bit of contradiction tonight in the statements about the capacity of that line. I think we need to know that for sure. I think I'm hearing some contradiction with our understanding of that. I think we need to know that for sure. And I also heard our consultant who's doing their sanitary sewer work say that we need to change the design on some of that line as well, so.
Certainly, we'll have an opportunity to speak with Mike Berg on Wednesday, so that we can address that in person with Mike.
Other feedback? Okay, well, then we'll move on to Item 3 there under Reports, that Sales Tax Ordinance Revision. I think, Mr. Coling, that's yours.
Yes, Mr. President, Commissioners, this ordinance was requested by Bond Council, and it pertains to the 1% sales tax and the ability of the city to pledge those tax receipts in payment of bonds. If you recall, the city has two sales taxes that it assesses. There's a 1% sales tax and a 1/2% sales tax. They are enacted in different sections of our code. And the 1/2% sales tax does and always has included language in there that allows the city to pledge revenues under the 1/2% sales tax to the repayment of bonds. The 1% sales tax, since it was enacted earlier, it was enacted, I believe, in 1990, did not include that sort of language that explicitly allows the city to pledge those revenues in the repayment of bonds. So because the city is considering issuing bonds in the not-too-distant future, Bond Council has requested this ordinance in order to make explicit what I think has always been implicit in our code, on that being that the city could pledge the revenues from the 1% sales tax to the repayment of bonds. The city, under its Home Rule authority, does and always has had the ability to pledge revenues and to issue bonds for the repayment of capital projects. This ordinance would just make that explicit for the 1% sales tax as well. It's on for report for tonight, so I would appreciate any comments that you would have. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Are there any comments or questions? I did have a question that I raised with Mr. Kessel, and both the 1%, the 1/2%, those ordinances were passed by a vote of the people. If we have an ordinance that would allow us to pledge the 1% sales taxes, can the commission do that, or does it have to go before a vote of the people?
Mr. President, that would be a commission decision. It would not have to go before a vote of the people. And that measure is provided for in the city's Home Rule Charter. The Home Rule Charter provides that if an ordinance is enacted by a vote of the people, then the commission cannot repeal or make a material amendment to that ordinance for five years after the date of the vote. In this case, the ordinances that pertain to the city's 1% and 1/2% sales taxes were last voted on, or the ordinance as it is, was last voted on in 2001, so we're well beyond the five-year limit for what is required under the Home Rule Charter for a public vote.
Other comments or questions? Does anyone have any objection to Mr. Coling crafting this ordinance and bringing it up before the commission?
No, I see it as a housekeeping thing, really.
No.
Let's see, next, then we have the Infrastructure Prioritization Policy, and that was the one I referred to earlier. And, Mr. Coling, I think you're introducing that also.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. The ordinance before you has to do with establishing a policy of the city for how the city would address pending infrastructure projects. As you are aware, our comprehensive plan identified a number of infrastructure improvements that the city would need to construct and is planning on constructing in the near future. And this policy intends to make, again, to make explicit what the city's priorities are in terms of putting together these projects, designing them, engineering them, constructing them. There are more projects that were identified in the comprehensive plan than the city is going to be able to construct. And the comprehensive plan, I believe, listed out more than 30 projects that were pending infrastructure projects that the city would need to do in the future. And so we're looking for a way to sort of prioritize what comes first and what may need to wait until the city may have funding for it at some time in the future. So to review some of the resolution here as to what the priority would be, this resolution provides that the city's first priority would be the completion of infrastructure projects that are required in order to address immediate life, health, or safety concerns, or to comply with legal mandates or other emergency conditions that the city may face. In many of its processes, particularly treatment of wastewater and those sorts of things, the city is governed by the EPA and other regulatory bodies. And if our infrastructure, for whatever reason, needs to be updated in order to comply with those requirements, that obviously is a legal mandate and is going to require that project to be a priority that may come before other sorts of projects that the city may be facing. So as an initial matter, that is the first priority the city would have under this policy. And the next priority would be the completion of major infrastructure projects that result in system-wide improvements that benefit the entire public and are not limited to one area of the city or one particular development. Examples of this would be something like the wastewater treatment plant or the water reclamation facility, or the joint finished water pumping station. Those sorts of projects benefit everyone in the city, both properties that are preexisting and those that may come online with future development. And it would also include in this priority, system-wide improvements that pertain to major economic development, significant economic development projects. And under this policy, it recognizes that every new plat that comes before the city contains some measure of economic development in it. If there's a new plat being developed, it's going to contain some structure, and in some manner, that is economic development. But this, at least this item, would pertain only to those economic development projects that the commission would view as significant, substantial, major economic development projects that will benefit the entire city as well. Item 3 under this policy provides that the next priority is the completion of infrastructure that would include funding from outside agencies, whether those are federal or state agencies, or in some cases, cases from private developers. This pertains particularly to urban roads projects, where there may be a cost share that may be there for a limited amount of time, where the federal government or the state government may provide funding to the city, and we need to prioritize a project and move it forward in order to capture that sort of outside funding. The next item, Item 4, provides that the next priority is infrastructure that involves major water and sewer trunk lines, our transportation facilities that would provide substantial system improvements that benefit a large portion of the city, although it may not benefit the entire city as something like a water reclamation facility would be. The next priority down the list would be the completion of infrastructure that would provide city services to existing occupied structures within city limits. Due to annexations and some other issues, there are structures within the city limits that don't have adequate fire suppression or city streets or sewer service in some cases, and would be a priority of the city to provide that infrastructure as well. And the next priority under this policy would be completion of infrastructure to provide city services to areas that are already platted but as yet unbuilt. We do have a number of those plats within the city that are waiting for infrastructure so that they can begin developing, and that would be a priority of the city under this policy as well. The next item is infrastructure that would allow for the development of raw land, areas that have not been platted at this point, but would be developed in the future if infrastructure was provided to those areas. And then the last priority under this policy would be the completion of infrastructure that can be developed quickly with a minimum of engineering cost and construction projects, or construction costs. There are occasionally some projects that happen that we know can be done fairly quickly and fairly cost-effectively, and in all other things being equal, we would like to move those projects up in priority over those that may require more engineering and a greater construction cost. This is, this resolution would establish the policy of the city in order to prioritize projects. We would use a policy like this, if adopted by the city commission, to go through the pending projects that we have and establish a sort of rank order for all those projects and determine which ones would receive priority and which ones may need to wait in time until the city may have funding for those. We recognize that we're in a dynamic economic environment here, and the infrastructure projects that we're looking at may change over time. We would anticipate, looking at this policy and reordering the infrastructure projects that we have, more or less on an annual basis, and that is provided for in our comprehensive plan as well. I believe that provides an overview of the resolution on the policy as it is presented to you. I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Again, this wouldn't be for action tonight. He's introduced it to you to get your feedback on it, and so if you have feedback, comments, questions, now would be the time to present those to Mr. Coling.
Well, I think that the, just the concept of doing this is really important. It seems logical to me, but just the effort, I think, is very important. There may be some devil in the detail here, I don't know. And I think I understand that you're talking about doing a dry run of sorts and test the priority system.
Commissioner Jackson, we have done that. We have a draft that we're willing and able to present.
Okay, I, you know, I think that would be a good exercise, just to see how it works. But I think all told, very good.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Other comments? I've read through the resolution a couple of times. I think it's well-written, and I'm comfortable with, you know, bringing this to the commission for action at the next meeting. Anybody feel differently?
It's our biggest challenge. We have our roadmap to 2035. We know where we're at today and where we need to get, but we can't approve everything, and you can't disapprove everything either. You do have to have some criteria of how you move forward from this point.
We've identified, through the comprehensive planning process, $300-plus million in infrastructure, and our resources are going to die out long before that. So you're entirely accurate, Commissioner Altman. We have to have a system to establish prioritization, and unfortunately, we don't have unlimited resources. So there's going to be some projects we just simply can't do right away, and that's why we need your guidance to help us select those.
Well, I think we're comfortable with you bringing this forward, and did anybody have any suggested changes to what you read here?
You know, the one thing that caught my attention, that I wonder about, when you get down to Item 6 or 7, I can't remember where it was, putting the highest priority on residential and specifically our one residential, and I agree with that. I think today, we need to do it. But I wonder if you shouldn't be wording that in such a way that it gives you more flexibility. Two years from now, we may want it for commercial or something else, and then you'd have to rewrite the ordinance to change that priority. I wonder if it shouldn't be written more generically that, considering the needs of the community for land use or something like that, so you don't paint yourself in a corner. Like I say, I agree with the priorities that are given, that are shown here today.
Commissioner Jackson, when we went through this process, our intent originally was to apply this for the next two years, because that was where our highest demand was for projects. So I think we later changed the language, though, to include those projects identified in our comprehensive plan. So that obviously would mean a much longer period of time than just a two-year window. So I guess it, you know, if we wanted to just use it for the next two years, we could strictly identify that, which probably means that that section stays the same. But if we really want to keep the language we have with regard to using the comprehensive planning document as the tool to identify projects, you may need to be entirely accurate then. A more general statement there is probably required.
Mr. Coling, along those lines, can the city have a resolution that has a sunset? You know, where the resolution expires one year from now or 24 months from now?
Mr. President, yes. The parameters around resolutions are fairly loose, actually. It's a statement of policy adopted by the commission, so if you wanted to sunset this policy, you would have the discretion to do that.
Yeah, what I'm thinking is that, let's say, for example, we put a 12-month sunset on it. It forces us then to look at it again and say, are these the same priorities that seem to fit the current environment that we're in? And if they are, you just reenact it the way it is, and if they aren't, you make some changes. But if it sunsets, you have, you have to look at it formally once a year, or every 24 months, whatever you choose for a sunset period.
Will that encourage applicants to wait until after a sunset date?
In my view, you really don't need the sunset, because you can change the resolution at any time. So, I mean, if we find three months after we passed it that it doesn't seem to work or fit, we can simply amend the resolution and...
Yeah, I was thinking it was ordinance.
Yeah, no, it's not an ordinance, it's a resolution. So we're good to go? Then, number five is construction management and slash construction management at risk. I think Mr. Coling's going to, this, we're bringing this up as kind of a matter of education, and the reason I asked for this to be on here, it has to do with the Public Safety Center, because that's an issue for us right now. But I think when it, you know, it comes to construction, the normal way we do things is, you know, you select an architect, and you bid the project, and general contractors bid it, and... bid it, and you take the little general contractor and away you go. If it's a larger, more complex project, here in the past, whether it's been the Community Center or the Mad Lines Activity Center, the Beju Center, we've built it with construction management. Well, these things work pretty well when you have a situation where perhaps there is more capacity to build than there are projects to build in your community. In other words, supply exceeds demand. When it turns around the other way, where demand for building exceeds the capacity to build or exceeds supply, now we've got a different animal. And that's the situation Western North Dakota's in and Dickinson's in, where we -- there's plenty of work, and so there's more work than maybe there are contractors or subcontractors. So we may have to look at some different ways of doing things. So with that introduction, we've asked Mr. Coling to educate us a little more on construction management.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. What I prepared is just a brief overview of the process for selecting a construction manager or construction manager at risk. As Mr. Johnson indicated, the normal process that we go through in constructing buildings is to get it designed by an architect, put it out to bid, and then you generally live with the bids that you get, whatever those come in at. The process of doing a construction management or construction management at risk is a little different, and it's provided for in Sentry Code, but it allows a public entity, allows the city to construct buildings through what we would be more familiar as or more familiar with as a request for proposals process. The, under the construction management at risk process, the city would put out a request for proposals from construction management firms to construct a building, say, the Public Safety Center or something similar to that. There are strictures, restrictions in Sentry Code that limit what the city can require of those proposals, of those proposals, what information they need to provide in order to be considered, and restrictions in how the city would form a selection committee in order to review those proposals. But after that, a request for proposal responses are received. There is a numeric scoring process that is provided by Sentry Code. The selection committee would review those request for proposals from construction management firms and then make a recommendation for a selection of a construction manager to the Board of City Commissioners. From there, if the city commission would approve of somebody who responded to that RFQ, then we would go into contract negotiations and negotiate a maximum price contract for the construction of that particular building. From there, it is then up to the construction manager at risk to construct the building. The construction manager at risk negotiates with any subcontractors or material suppliers that he wants to bring in on the project, and the city's cost for building that structure is limited by contract, limited to the maximum price that is provided for in the contract. If the construction manager cannot get subcontractors and material suppliers at his negotiated price, then it is at the construction manager's cost, and the city's financial contribution or cost of that project is limited by the contract. It has been done before in North Dakota. I don't believe we have done it as a city before, but it is an alternative method for constructing a project and getting a building built that is provided for in Sentry Code, and it has been done by other cities as well. That is the construction manager at risk portion of it. There is also the construction manager portion that is provided by City Code or by Sentry Code, rather, and that allows the city to engage a construction management firm in order to control the process of how the building is built. The construction manager organizes the design of the building, the engineering of the building, and then the procurement of contracts. But under a construction manager process, the contracts would still be bid out in a normal process. It would just be the construction management firm that would have oversight of that process and oversight of the contractors that would be providing services for that building. So those are alternative methods that are provided for by Sentry Code in order to build buildings and do so within the guidelines that Sentry Code has provided for us. We'd be happy to try to address any questions you might have.
Mr. Coling, you may have covered it, but if you're functioning just as a construction manager, you're prevented from performing any ass, any of the physical work on the project. If you're a construction manager at risk, you can self-perform in some sections of the building. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. President. There are limitations on that, and notice has to be provided to the city anytime a construction manager at risk is providing services on his own behalf and not subcontracting for those. But under the construction manager at risk, it's up to the construction manager in order to bring that building in, and how he does it and the subcontractors and material suppliers that he may use are up to that construction manager.
See, you know, if you've followed the Community Center project, that's just a construction management project, and they, I forget how many different bid sections they had for the project, but I think in two or three sections, they received no bids. In a couple of sections, they received just one bid per section. Well, you know, if a subcontractor suspects that they're, he or she's going to be the only bidder or maybe going to be one of two bidders, you're more likely to raise your price. And that's what I meant earlier about if you're in a situation where there is lots of work, kind of the traditional method of doing things, I think, breaks down, and we're certainly in that situation. If you go, went with construction manager at risk, and they had trouble negotiating with contractors for, say, the carpentry section or something like that, they can always self-perform and do it themselves then, and they're responsible for that price. And I would like you to consider, think about, using the construction management at risk method for the public safety building. And, you know, we don't make that decision tonight, but it's a new concept. We've done the construction management here in our community, but after seeing the bid results on the Community Center, I'm just a little concerned, and I'd feel more comfortable myself going this other direction.
Just anecdotally, Attorney Coling mentioned that the other communities have used this, and if you're familiar with the Community Center being built in Williston, they are using a construction manager at risk process, as I understand it, and that's quite a building. And the same environment that exists here exists there, so they found it beneficial to go use this process. And also, we have talked to Schutz Foss and preliminary discussions with them about using a construction management process, so they are aware that that is a direction we could go.
Mayor Johnson, we were very thorough on our questioning, too, when we asked them if they would have a construction manager on site and whether they would use local contractors for the bidding process. We were very thorough. So it was like a three-week process before we finally made a decision.
You know, I think whether it's construction management or construction manager at risk, I think they would tell you that their preference is to use local contractors, because they are going to be the most competitive. But again, when you have an environment where there is so much work and contractors can pick and choose what they're willing to do and work on, and if they know there are going to be limited bidders or maybe they're going to be the only bidder on a section, we're really exposed, and I think this gives us more protection. Now, the public safety building, I don't think is going to be, you know, a large project. It's certainly not in the same size as the Williston project that Mr. Kessel mentioned, but it would be a project where I think it'd be, we'd get a chance to get our feet wet, see how it goes. We've had good results in this community with construction management. You know, I believe Sanford Clinic and the hospital right now are being built under construction management. We use construction management in the original Community Center. The expansion is going construction management, but again, the environment here is, well, the economy is so, construction economy is so strong, I think we should go one more step and try construction management at risk. Want you to consider that. We'd like to place that on the agenda at the next meeting, so... But think about it. If you've got questions or comments now, feel free to ask them. If you have questions about it between now and the next meeting, feel free to talk to Any red flags at this point? Okay. Thank you notes. Mr. Kessel.
We generally don't just discuss these, but we oftentimes get thank yous for dollars or programs that we provide. This one specifically is from Sunset Senior Center. They've received funds related to the senior grant that we provide southwest North Dakota.
Anything else, Mr. Kessel?
New England did the same thing. New England Senior Center also provided a thank you note for the same reasons.
Any questions for the city administrator or city attorney? All right, then we'll move to engineering and the Highway 22 landscaping project. Mr. Watson?
Mr. President, Commissioner, we have come to an agreement. We'll all take engineering to help us plant some trees out on North Highway 22. The amount not to exceed for engineering design would be $15,000. The amount not to exceed for construction management to help us make sure all those trees are still alive before we put them in the ground is $7,500. So I guess I'm asking your concurrence to enter into a contract with old tag engineering for the design and construction oversight of this important project on Highway 22 north of the city.
You've heard Mr. Watson's introduction here. Do you have comments or questions?
The city's matching amount is $32,000?
Yes, sir. The federal and state is 150, $125,000 plus our $32,000 brings the total construction cost to $157,000. The city would be responsible for the $32,000 plus the engineering fees, which is the $22,500 for old tag engineering.
So the city would be in it for $54,500?
Be in it for $54,500, that's correct.
The, probably the issue here really is this goes up to the Dunn County line, and obviously, our city limits don't go to the Dunn County line. Our ETZ, I don't even think goes to the Dunn County line. And so, you know, it's like, why would the city do this? You know, and I think the answers are, one, you know, we want to maintain the curb appeal of the corridors as they come into the city. This would be one way of doing that, and in terms of funding it, the hospitality tax would, I think, fund this, and possibly even the 30% of the 1%. And both these taxes are collected not only from people who live within the city but people who live outside of the city. And so, you know, I think you can justify spending the money doing that. But I think that is really the issue here, is spending money for trees that are outside the city limits. There will be some within the city limits, I assume, but primarily outside the city limits.
The expected number of trees is from 250 to 300 trees, so I'm not sure how far north we're going to get with that, but that's why we're trying to get the landscape architect on board so they can help us decide that.
Are we starting at the Dunn County line coming towards the city, or are we starting at the city going north?
No, we would be starting at the city going north. Well, no, we would be starting within the city and going...
Going north, yes, okay. We just go as far as we have trees, then?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Well, does anybody object to this? Concerned?
Need a motion to approve the contract?
Yeah, what do we need here, Mr. Watson? I forget, just, are we approving, is there a contract here?
We do have a, maybe I should defer this to Mr. Coling.
Mr. President, Commissioners, there is a contract in your packets, and I believe your motion would be to approve the contract.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Second it?
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion. Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson, Mr. Altman, Mrs. Stuarts, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Then you have some project updates?
I do, Mr. President. Thank you, Commissioner. The weather's kind of hampered the Villard construction project. As you can imagine, we're kind of back in the same mode we were at last commission meeting. The milling is happening over on the east side of Highway 22 with paving expected next week. I really anticipate that this Villard construction project will probably be still in motion through the Fourth of July weekend, so, or the Fourth of July holiday, so... And then following the milling and overlay project, we have identified an additional part of the project that was omitted as part of the original project, which will include concrete collars around all the manholes and water valves in the streets. So that's expected to take four to six additional weeks of construction, so they may be in there in Villard for, until the middle of August, we're not sure. So the boring underneath Villard ran into a large underground structure under the railroad tracks, and there's an issue with that bore. The folks that are doing that bore were to relocate that and try again, and we're not sure what it's hit yet, so maybe the Director of Public Works can update that at the next commission meeting. Another public works project that's underway is the Rocky Butte Water Reservoir, and that's currently being sandblasted. We haven't heard any complaints or any other issues with that, so that's currently being done. The railroad grade separation, we just got a technical memorandum from the state today wanting our concurrence for the typical section that we'll be using on that railroad grade separation. There will be a bridge involved. The State Avenue will go over the railroad tracks, and we have been in discussions with the DOT regarding that typical section, and we are in concurrence with their recommendation.
We're going to go over and not under?
We will go over. We'll be bringing that memorandum, technical memorandum, to the commission next meeting for, so you can get a chance to look at that and have a decision on what you want to do with that. As I indicated, the staff recommends, recommends agreement with what the state has in mind there. The reliever route, the interim reliever route is to bid June 28, and the urban section from the freeway to 21st Street should be open to traffic in early November. There will be, possibly, there'll be some aspects of that construction that won't be completed. of the, of that construction that won't be completed. For instance, the lighting may be delayed as well as the joint use path, but it should be open to traffic at least. As you know, the construction for the interim bypass is going to be in, in two seasons, and the rural section will be constructed, constructed next construction season. And the interchange at Exit 56 will be bid in November. The stormwater drainage study, we will enter into negotiations with HDR for that study on Thursday, and we should have something for you next commission on contract to approve that important waste, important stormwater drainage study. 12th Street West Urban Project between, between Highway 22 and 13th is, we've received the construction documents from the contractor. We're just waiting for verification from the bonding company to make sure that they in fact did get the bond, and we will be issuing a notice to proceed as soon as we get that verification from the bonding company. Again, our share in that construction is about $900,000, which is a little bit more than half, plus we're paying the engineering fees. The 10th Avenue West project from 29th to 40th Street will be bid in November. Rightaway acquisition is in process. Mr. Coling is, is handling the rightaway acquisition. City share in this project is about 1.2 million. You just approved the Highway 22 landscaping project. The PS and E plans are due to the DOT by mid-July on this project. We have received proposals for the construction management team that we expect to bring onto the city to help us get eyes out into the street to see what we're having built, not only by developers, by some, but by some of our own projects that we're going to be moving forward with. And we've requested that one of the firms come to town and give us a, a short interview and a question and answer period. That date has not been set yet. So, we're hoping that soon so that we can get these team on board as soon as possible to help us with the construction activities here in the city. And the last issue I have is railroad quiet zone. How does the commission feel about beginning a program for railroad quiet zones through the city?
Any reaction, quiet zones?
I think anyone living along the railroad track would like to see that for sure. I know some of our smaller cities are doing that now around us. I would like to see it. I know you can hear it everywhere.
I, I think it's definitely something that we should, we should look into. I, you know, with the, with us looking into downtown renovation revitalization projects and so on, you know, if we're going to encourage building and living units and so on downtown, I think the quiet zone actually comes into that also. So, I'd be much in favor of looking into what we can do there.
Through, through excellent communication with, with a person who is, well, with Mr. Jackson actually, has indicated that each of these quiet zones should run about $300,000 as a general rule of thumb. Commissioner Jackson has put on this. So, that's kind of a ballpark figure that we might want to look at.
And how many quiet zones would there be?
I believe there's three.
Three.
I was just going to say, don't quote me on that, but I guess you did.
I already did.
Too late.
Too late.
That's better numbers than when I heard-
I, I think we should look at it, too. I've had a number of people approach me over the last 12 months about the possibility of a quiet zone, and I think it would really be an improvement for the community. You know, the number of crossings might be in question. You probably could do just two, but I would think we'd want to do three. But I think that's the next step is just to get a ballpark for the cost. We're, we're biting off so much infrastructure here right now, so much. And this may not end up being a high enough priority to do it. But I think we need to get a feel for costs.
Well, and also, we're dealing with the, with the railroad. So, this is likely to be a timely program. So, I think that if you're interested in starting this, probably should start now for, for any type of construction in the next maybe two or three years, really.
Well, I concur with my fellow commissioners. I mean, I, it's a desire, I think it's a desirable thing. When we talk about quality of place in our community, it would enhance quality of place. As Mr. Jackson said, you know, and others have said earlier that, you know, we have so many projects and we have more projects than, than we have money at this time. Might as well add another one to the list, you know, and see how this whole sorts out and-
Very well. Then I'll contact the railroad and see what's on their agenda.
Mr. Watson, I'd like to go back to the mill and overlay on Villard. It looks like they've milled down about one inch. Is that the total that they usually mill down on that? Or is that just a first run?
No, and I think it's, I think it's a two-inch mill. But, yeah, that's, that's the limit. There's not going to be another mill.
You think that's what they already have down now, two inches or?
Well, whatever they have down is all they're going to take. But I thought the original, I thought the project was a two-inch mill and overlay. I'm pretty sure it is. But what you see is we're not going to mill anymore.
It didn't look like two inches, maybe.
Well, you're so doggone tall. I mean, you look down and you got a, from my height, it looked like about four-inch mill, yeah. So, Mr. Watson, I can't remember, is the Villard project, is it from exit to exit eventually? Or from Exit 59 to Exit 63? Does anybody?
That is correct, Mr. President.
Okay. So, they are going to go all the way here, huh?
Yes.
Because it doesn't look like that's what they're doing at this point, but-
I, I really am not sure, and so I better not say. You know, I haven't, at this late date, I really haven't had a chance to study the plans and the, actually, the construction started before the, I had an opportunity even to read the plans. So, it's possible that it's correct.
Could you take a look at it and let us know at the next meeting if it is exit? I, I've been asked, and I may have answered incorrectly, so.
I'll have a look and report back.
Okay.
Mr. President, I believe it is, because we discussed it here, that it was like 4.2 or 4.4 miles, which would be from exit to exit.
Yeah, I think it is, but maybe we're thinking that it is and the contractor isn't, though. Maybe that's why they're low. So, you'll look at it, though. Okay.
We could ask Catherine, the article in the paper said it was from exit to exit, right?
All right, well, the paper said it's got to be right. Anything else for the city engineer?
Not at this time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. There's no community development, no public works report, any reports by city commissioners? Okay. If there's someone from the public that would like to address the city commission, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
My name is Kathy Fisher. I think I know several of you up here, but my, I own a building on the corner of First Avenue and First Street West. And what I'm here for is not to ask for anything. What I'm here for is out of concern. We had a carnival this last week, and my concern is the way in which it was brought to town. After, first of all, as a business owner downtown, we were notified, I actually found out because I have children that work for the city, but we were never officially notified that it was coming. I have talked to other owners around me, and they were told two days before the carnival drove into town that it was coming. So, Mike, there was a lot, the carnival, as far as the carnival is concerned, it, there, I have no complaints. The carnival, Ted Bernus, Berzinus or something like that is his last name. He's the public relations director. We had several conversations. If we had any problems, he was right there to take care of them. My concern, however, is in the fact that he was telling me that he had met with, met Sean Kessel at a fair of some sort where you go to sign these type of things up, and that he had had a contract with Mr. Kessel, signed by Mr. Kessel, in the middle of April. And yet, there was no discussion at all with the downtown, well, with, anyway with me or as a downtown owner, or as far as from I can understand, and talking to several others in our area, there was no discussion. My decision was to come to you today and ask for an ordinance to be put together so that when something like this happens, that it would be a requirement that you, that we, that there is permission received from people that are in an area that's going to be affected. But when I did my homework, there is an ordinance to that effect. It's ordinance, or it's in the city code, it's section eight. And it specifically is for carnivals and circuses. But it specifically says that consent of surrounding property owners, the Board of City Commissioners shall not issue a permit for renting, setting up, et cetera, without, let's see, with the application of consent of the owners of 75% of the property by area within a distance of 300 feet from the boundary lines upon which the applicant proposes to exhibit or conduct the performances. I don't know when you, as a city commission, approved this permit. From my understanding and talking to Ted, I think it was done like on Tuesday. I mean, it sounded to me like there was a lot of miscommunications through this thing. My concern is that if in fa, well, I have two concerns. First of all, I'm, I'm surprised that the city is contracting for a carnival. I, I just think that during this time in our town, there is way, things way more important than our city administrator to be contracting out to carnivals. My second concern is that as a city administrator, I, I think he should have been aware of this ordinance and have at least, I know it's that, I know it's the carnival's people's part to get their permits and to bring the stuff in. But I'm guessing whoever contracted with him, had it been the city, had it been another organization within town, that they would have let those people know what they needed when they got to town to get their permit. I would have hoped that he would have at least known that there was this ordinance in, in, on the books. So, I guess that what I'm here for is just to make sure that as city commissioners, you are aware of, of the concern and the, and the, I guess, really, how angry a lot of people were over this whole situation. And I think it was, in the way it was handled. And, but, like I said, I'm not asking for anything. It's too late. It's not anything that we can change now. But what I would hope going forward is that we just take a better look at the ordinances that we do have on the books.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Kessel, anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, thank you. I wasn't aware of the ordinance that was referred to this evening. And obviously, knowing that it exists in the manner that it does, we would have done things differently. I also would concur that there was communication deficiencies involved in this process. We had involved the Chamber of Commerce, and I thought they were taking care of that, and they thought I was taking care of that. So, we had some communication deficiencies. I wish that would have went better, but it didn't. And as we, as you have said, it's water under the bridge at this point. We can only do better in the future. But it did underline a couple of things for, for me specifically, and that is the need for a downtown association. It is very difficult for a community, myself specifically, to, you know, we're, we're embarking upon a process to revitalize the downtown as best we can. And to do that, it would behoove us to have a downtown association that can represent and speak on behalf of the whole downtown area.
And I think that there have been meetings with, in fact, I know they're at, because I've been part of them. There have been meetings with business places in downtown, and there is one that is being put together. That we have had downtown associations in the past. I've been in business in Dickinson in some form or another for 40 years. And in, at our meeting that we had, we were saying how they, we have been in and out with downtown associations, probably three times that I'm aware of. And so, I do know that that is, in fact, you know, in the process of being put together, and I think it'll be a good one. And, but, but that being, being one or not, probably in this situation, I don't know if that would have taken care of this, because there just was no communications with anyone. I mean, everyone that I talked to within that area, no one, no one knew about it. I think American State Bank was the only one that had any conversation, and I think theirs was only a week before this happened. I mean, I think before any of that contract was even signed with that carnival, that there should have been some type, whether this ordinance was on the books or not, Mr. Kessel, I really feel that there should have been communication with people who were going to be affected.
Ms. Fisher, I acknowledge the fact that there was, should have been better communication. The carnival itself, the thought and the idea grew out of the desire for events in the downtown area. That was brought up at a downtown meeting held at the library. And so, the process was well-intentioned to bring an event, to bring a destination to the, to the downtown area, especially in a time when Villard was being under construction and access was-
This is probably the worst time.
Yeah. I did have a good conversation with approximately five downtown businesses on Thursday where these very same issues were brought to, to my attention. We, we discussed the idea of the downtown association. It's where I became aware that, that there has been some meetings to, to get started, and I, I really appreciate that. And we also further refined the type of events that they would like to see in the downtown area, because they certainly weren't opposed to closing streets as we did. It just depended on the type of event that the streets were closed for. So, that was good for me to, to hear that kind of feedback. And there was a good discussion because not everybody is affected in the same way. So, what's good for one isn't necessarily good for the other, and that was brought out in the meeting as well. You know, the, the carnival wanted to extend their stay by another week. They would have loved to have, have stayed down. They considered this successful. I mean, they had two, two days where rain hampered their, their success, but they were really appreciative of, of being able to come to our downtown area. Of course, I said no, based upon the feedback that I had received from those of you in, in the downtown area. So, having said all of that, you know, I certainly agree and have stated that there have been communication deficiencies, and we would certainly do the things differently in the future.
And like I said, I'm not here to get, I, I don't, I'm not asking for anything. It's, I'm glad to hear your information. But like I said, I just wanted to make sure, I can't believe, I'm sure that all of the commissioners must have gotten calls from people in town. I'd be surprised if you didn't. But, but like I said, I just felt it's necessary that you know that things were not handled correctly, and I, I just think that there's something that we just need to watch.
I think after the calls we got, we, we knew that. But I wasn't aware, and I, I assume my fellow commissioners were, that we already had an ordinance on the books.
Yeah. And actually, the ordinance itself is, it's, it's 8.4, and it's, it's, Carnivals and Circuses is how it's titled. But I, as you read the, the description of what it would cover, it would cover any type of an event where you would ask for-
I, I guess we've learned several lessons here. One lesson would be when we go to do something new, we should ask our city attorney. Now, are there any ordinances regarding this before we go forward?
Well, and like I said, I just think some discussion earlier on. I, I just think by the time that it was even brought out that this was coming, I think that was the biggest mistake.
I, you're absolutely correct. I think in all of what I heard Mr. Kessel say, I think I heard you say you're sorry, too. Didn't I? Yeah.
Well, thank you for your time. That is all I needed to say.
Mr. President, just a comment here. We do have a downtown association, but I think it's just Parking Association. Is that, is that correct?
It's a what association?
Parking Association. Feet from the Downtown Parking Association.
Oh, that's a, yeah, special assessment. Yeah, yeah.
That's the only downtown association I'm familiar with. As far as being notified in advance, I thought that would have been great for everyone to know. Also, we were impacted. But on the other, you know, had you been- But on the other, you know, had you been notified early enough, it would have given you an opportunity and another business in town to have a special, or events of your own to, you know, to draw the people into your place of business also.
Well, yes and no. I really think if we'd had a meeting beforehand and knowing they had to have approval of seventy-five percent, I don't think we'd have had a carnival in downtown Dickinson.
You don't think so?
No.
What about some of the businesses that have something that they could have attracted?
Well, they need to speak for themselves. I mean, we, I can't say that it hurt our business. Don't get me wrong. I'm not sitting here telling you it hurt my business.
See, I heard both sides of it.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is I still would have voted no. I still would not have given my consent. And for most of the men I've talked to, I don't think you'd have gotten seventy-five percent. And especially, both the type of the deal, I'm also, I mean, we had, you know, young children all over downtown and, you know, cars, and the parking was atrocious. And so I don't know that it was just that. It was just that, I just don't think it would have happened. But you're right, if it's the right, if it's the right thing that's coming, maybe that would have happened. I don't know.
Kathy, how about the Five Alive? That was a really good turnout last summer.
Well, that's still on. Five Alive starts this Thursday, and that runs every week.
I know this year's not...
And my idea of this was to come before you and say, anytime you're going to close more than two streets downtown and for more than one day, is when I thought that this should be put into place, that you should be, you should have to get, you know, sign-offs from people. And so when I read this, that, you know, it really doesn't cover it that way. But I was just surprised to see that there was an ordinance, and it just wasn't, it wasn't found.
When I know, too, that the Rough Rider Commission, I've heard quite a few complaints this year. We just have to deal with it this year with the parade. I mean, it isn't gonna happen again, that we had to reroute everything, and it is gonna affect people's businesses down here.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
In order to move ahead and get our new overlay project done...
And I'm sure you're going to still hear from other businesses downtown, but like I said, I just wanted to make sure that it was, that I just wanted to make sure that we understood that what would happen just shouldn't ever have happened.
Well, I'm glad you brought, especially brought the ordinance to our attention. We have to follow our own ordinances. We don't have an option to pick and choose there.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have a question coming from someone. It looks like there's gonna be three carnivals slash circuses this year. Is that correct? Was this a new one that came to town?
Well, I didn't know if we'll have them. We have to follow the ordinance now and get approval. And we'll do that with all the, all form, or all carnivals moving forward.
The other ones that have been, are there others that are planning to go downtown?
Not downtown.
Oh, okay.
But that's not, as we understand it, as the ordinance we're just now reading, that's not the definitive trigger for this ordinance.
Three hundred feet, right?
Yeah, it's if it exists within three hundred feet of any business. So the, even the one that's been held at the mall, which can't be held there this year, would have to go through the same ordinance and get the same approval.
Sean, somebody questioned that to me, and they said, why would that not happen before?
Mrs. Fisher, if you want to talk, come to the mic so you can be recorded, okay? Thank you.
I just, that had been brought to my attention, too. But what we, what, apparently, the mall also signs part of that contract, and because they have a manager, the mall manager, okay, they didn't feel they had to have the sign-offs from the others. That's why we thought this just got missed on this one, because somebody said, why was this never, why wouldn't they have not known this? And so, that was just something that somebody had brought up. They thought maybe because of that. I don't know.
This ordinance hasn't been applied since I've been here. I can't speak to before that, but it hasn't been applied since I've been here.
Well, why don't we, Mr. Colleen, why don't you review the ordinance and come back at the next meeting and give us an education on it? And if we haven't been following it, maybe it needs to be changed somewhat. Or if it doesn't need to be changed, maybe we just need to follow it, too. So, does that make sense? It made sense to me.
The other comment I had was from another association in town. They were concerned with the number of carnivals, et cetera, and whether there's just so many dollars for carnivals and what we intend to do there. So I think we gotta look at the whole thing. You know, do we want two in town? Do we want three over the summer? I know there's some concern about competition.
Well, you may not have done a lot of things right with this carnival, but I think when you said to them, no, don't extend, that was a good decision, so. And I know I'm happy about that, so. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the commission?
Hi, I'm Michelle Kovash, and I am the president of the Rough Rider Commission in Dickinson. And I just wanted to address and let you know that I found out about the carnival downtown at ten o'clock at night when my phone started ringing, saying that it was the Rough Rider Days carnival. So, if you ever need to know any information, be more than happy to help you out, Sean.
I actually do have a question for you. What has been the Rough Riders Commission's role in the carnival that had been held at the mall previously? Because my understanding today is that that contract was between the mall and the carnival. Is that accurate?
No, no. The contract was with the Rough Rider Commission and the carnival, and we've always held it at the mall. Last year, we were informed that they would be doing work on the parking lot and no longer wanted it there. So, that is where you would have got your information, if you talked to Peggy, and, you know, that we weren't having it there, because we weren't.
I did talk to Peggy, okay. But you, the contract is specifically with the Rough Rider Commission?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So, and, you know, I think the thing is, if you're gonna bring one to town, the financial backing is important. The Kiwanis Club, which is important to our community, is bringing in the circus a week before our carnival. We love having that connection and being able to advertise with them and that type of thing. So I think the communication thing is the number one thing, if we can all just get on the same page. And, you know, we have a website up, our emails, our names, all of that is there. We've been around for forty years, so you can find someone that usually knows something that's going on. But that was our main concern, because, I mean, we want everyone to succeed with events in Dickinson. And we all know there's only so many dollars that can go around for all the families, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kovash. Anybody else like to speak to the commission?
Hi, my name is Kami Havelken. I'm an owner of Downtown Business. I know quite a few of you. We just wanted to go on record, we have many of the businesses downtown have gotten together to try to formulate a downtown association, and I have been one of the members that have done that. We just want to go on record today and request the assistance or the support of the city to possibly look at another alternative route for the parade that would still be able to hit our downtown area, because it is very vital to, I think, our community and to show our community involvement and community of spirit. And I just wanted to ask to possibly get your support, or maybe even look at a different alternative route.
Have we established a route at this point?
President Johnson, the police department has approached the Rough Rider Commission about an alternative route due to all the construction and such downtown. There was a meeting held between police department staff and members of the Rough Rider Commission, I'm not sure if it was the full board or not, in which they reviewed a route. I was told after that meeting that there may not have been full consensus on behalf of the Rough Rider Commission on the route that was provided or suggested by the police department. So I've asked Chief Dossinger to go back to the Rough Rider Commission and have a further discussions with regard to the parade route. Haven't, chief's in the back. I'm not sure if that meeting has taken place or not, but they were revisiting the route itself.
Okay, well, here comes Chief Dossinger. Maybe he can help us out with this issue, too.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. Conversations we had with Engineer Watson and Public Works Director Zerhoff indicated that we are gonna have some serious issues over Rough Rider Days on Villard. We did meet with the Rough Rider Commission and also President Michelle Kovash about three months, three weeks ago? Three to four weeks ago, to try to be proactive in addressing some of these issues. Going into that meeting, the police department did have a plan as far as a route that probably basically served the community of Dickinson as far as less traffic interruption during the construction zone and just overall a better public safety. The route that we had, the plan that we had suggested would come out of the Bejou Activity Center on Estade Avenue, would then head north up the Empire. From Empire, it would head east over to Thirteenth Avenue West. From there, it would head south over to Second Street, and then back over to the Bejou Activity Center. Total route difference is a two-tenths of a mile difference from that route. This route is two-tenths shorter than the route that we normally have over Rough Rider Days.
That's, you want us to consider an alternative that is different to what Chief Dossinger just outlined, is that correct? And if I understood you correctly, you would want a route that brings us closer to the downtown area than the route he just described? You'll have to come to the mic, I'm sorry. It's, we can hear you, but to record for Channel nineteen. Yeah, you're gonna be a TV star now.
One of the routes that many of the downtown members had gotten together and discussed was possibly instead of going past Villard, was to go, maybe redirect it down First Street, down to Second or Third Street.
Well, here's my feeling, and you guys jump in here, but after the carnival...
Event?
Event, the good choice. After the carnival event, I think we owe the downtown our very best effort in trying to accommodate them, even if it means extra manpower for the police department. And I guess even if we cause some traffic issues, there's probably not a perfect thing we can do. I know there's not a perfect thing we can do that's gonna make everybody happy. But I think maybe we owe the downtown merchants here some extra consideration that if we're gonna make anybody happy, I would suggest we make them happy. What do you think?
So what are you suggesting? They come down First Street and then go...
No, I'm, I'm not gonna design a parade route here tonight. If you want to do that, that's fine. I think we can let the Rough Rider Commission, the downtown, the newly formed downtown association and city staff try to figure it out. And I don't think distance is the primary concern here. I think proximity to downtown is probably the primary concern. You may end up with a shorter parade, but I'm thinking, I'm hearing that that is okay as long as we get as close to downtown as we can. Is that correct? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a suggestion. Maybe the Rough Rider Commission could get together with the downtown businesses, and they can formulate the plan and then present it to the city commission or to the police department.
I think you submit it to the police department and city staff. I mean...
My main, our main concern is the number of intersections that we will actually have to physically cover with manpower to run it that way. And also, I believe Mr. Watson, doesn't the road construction that's currently going down, don't they have some hoses that are currently hooked up to the fire hydrants that are gonna be running water over to that project? And there's a number of engineering dips through those intersections that could cause some issues for the floats and also the turning radiuses for the larger vehicles in the parade. So we did put a lot of thought into this. We're not trying to strong-arm them with our, it's not the police department parade.
We know you did. But we got the carnival issue to make amends for.
Thanks, Sean.
Okay? So, and Mr. Colleen, while you're at it, check the ordinances to make sure we don't violate any ordinances by doing this.
Parade ordinance.
Parade ordinance, okay. So, but we better get on it. July fourth is not that far away.
It's actually last weekend in June.
And if it keeps raining, it's just gonna complicate things with the construction. And so, let's do the best we can.
Thank you.
I think that's all we can do, right? Yep, okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, good luck with that. Is there anybody else that would like to address the commission? Okay, well, thank you for your comments, and I know we'll try to do better. We got one more coming? Well, just wait till you get up here, and then you can start. That's okay.
My name is Jamie Hike. I just want a clarification. So, the Rough Rider Commission is going to work with the downtown association or on the parade route, or how was that decided?
Well, what the chief said that he would prefer is that the downtown association and the Rough Rider Commission pick a route and present it to, you know, the city, which would be the police department and probably the city administrator.
Would it be all right if we organized a meeting and invited a representative from each branch to prevent us coming forward with a plan and then them saying, not gonna work because of this, and then us having to go back and...
If you can do it on a cooperative effort, I don't think anybody opposes that either.
Thank you.
I think what the chief was hoping to avoid is that you would say to him, try again, and, you know. So I think if you did it cooperatively, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to address this? All right, very good. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're adjourned.